The public meeting for the Dyton Conservation Commission is now open. Would everyone stand please for the furtherations?
I am one of the leaders to reply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being broadcast on cable and internet posting on www.dyton.mash.gov and YouTube. The first item on the agenda is the chairman's address, and I just have two items that I want to bring up. I've been talking about the American chestnuts that are around here, that were, the nuts that were collected last fall. There's about 100 of them already that have sprouted, and hopefully we'll get another 100 that'll sprout, and they will be planted around town this coming summer. So people that are interested, that have a wide variety of, let's say, a good amount of land and open to the forest, if you are interested in getting some, please contact the conservation office. The next item, I'm asking the members to read over the bylaws and look for changes. It's been in effect for several years now, and I would like you to come up with what you think is outdated and can be updated by next month and give it to Lisa. Okay, minutes of our previous meeting. We have the minutes from January 31st, 2024. Has everyone had a chance to read them over? Okay, is there a motion to accept the minutes from January 31st, 2024?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have an application for membership to the Dyton Conservation Commission. This application has been submitted by Lenny Hull Jr. He is constantly, currently-
Chairman, he's not here. I think you should wait.
I'm sorry?
I think you should wait to read it. He's not here.
No, I just want to, I'm not going to read what he has here, just except to nominate him, to put him as an alternate member.
Okay, I mean, you know, unless you want him to speak about it.
No, I'm just, you know, I think everybody knows him because he has been the liaison between the commission and the selectmen for a year or two now, so he is well aware of what's going on, and right now he is doing duty with the selectmen. But we can accept him and further his application to the new board of selectmen. He cannot become a member of the commission until after the elections of April-
6th.
6th, okay. So, but we could get him pushed ahead, and then the new, the new selectmen's can then vote him in to our commission. And again, he has, he has been here many times. He's, he's been involved in our activities. So what is your desire? Is your desire to nominate him for a membership to become a, an associate member? Okay, is there a motion then?
Motion to accept Lenny Hull as an associate member of the Conservation Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so this will, will not become effective until after the selectman vote, which would be after April 6th, because he cannot be on the two.
Mr. Chairman, we've got four sets of-
Of minutes.
Minutes from meetings?
Yes.
I don't even want to accept them.
We did that.
Did the 31st. We've got the 8th of January, we have the 29th of February.
We did the 8th already, but the 29th is still in draft.
Oh, all right, well, I mean, I had-
Okay.
The two here, that's all.
Yeah, the 8th we did last time.
Okay, so, okay, so the 29th is-
29th minutes are kind of, they're drafted for you guys, but I think we're waiting for some changes.
All right, okay.
Mr. Hull, we just had a vote on you, and your name is going to be forwarded to the selectmen after April 6th for official appointment, but we accepted you as an alternate member.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I didn't know how long you were going to be over there doing your duties as selectmen, and, oh. Wow, okay. I knew you didn't forget, but I was wondering if you were over there.
Yeah, sorry about that. It was my turn for budget, budget presentation today.
I guess it's important to get paid too, right?
Okay, and I'll talk to you about one of the items afterwards that we discussed about reviewing the bylaws.
Sure.
Okay. We have to review, discuss, and act on a continued hearing as an Enrad application by RJR Properties, Zero Horton Street, map seven, lot 36 and 36-1, DEP file number 17-475. This Enrad application has been withdrawn. Therefore, there will be no further action by the commission. Okay, next is a review, discuss, act on a continued hearing, a notice of intent by application by Robert J. Russell III, again at Old, Zero Old Horton Street, map seven, lot 36, for construction of a single-family house with septic tank. A portion of the system is within the buffer zone to the wetlands, DEP file number 17-481. This has been tabled to a date uncertain. When, when and if it is continued, but it does need to get re-notified. Next, we have a review, discuss, act on a continued hearing, abbreviated notice of area delineation, an Enrad from Cal Rabello Bell Pharma Estates, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Milk Street, map 17, lots 109, 135, and 208, DEP file number Is there someone here to represent them?
No, they requested a continuance.
I'm sorry?
They requested a continuance.
Okay.
They're trying to work some things out.
Okay, is there a motion to continue this hearing?
To 418.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
418 is our next meeting.
Okay. Review, discuss, act on a continued hearing from Ahmed Hafiz of Grasshopper Energy, Zero Brook Street, Dyton, where it includes clearing of 28 trees within the- Okay. Within the 25 to 100-foot buffer zone to jurisdictional wetlands, SE 17-492. Okay, the two members that just left have had some activity with the applicant, and therefore removed themselves to prevent any conflict of interest. Lisa, is that continued?
Yeah, so that's continued to a date uncertain. We don't have the information, and we, they haven't contacted, well, they did contact us to see if we'd do Zoom today, and I explained to them that, as we already told them once, that they have to re-notify the abutters based on the open meeting law, and we'll have to put in a legal notice into.
Okay, so to be continued at an uncertain date. Is there a motion to continue to, to a date uncertain?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda, review, discuss, act on a continued hearing, abbreviated notice of an, of resource area delineation, known as an Enrad application from Alexander Riberio, seeking confirmation of wetland resources at Zero Tiger Lily Road, map two, lot four dash five, DEP file number 17-495.
Just for the record, they requested a continuance, but I wanted to remind everybody, if you haven't checked your email, check your email. We have the peer review letter. We just can't have any discussion about it tonight. I called off West and Sampson because they did request a continuance. Okay, great, so you have printed copies more, you put in your packets.
Okay. Is this date uncertain? Are we going to do it until April?
Oh, no, do it till April, yep.
Okay, is there a motion to continue this hearing at, of Zero Tiger Lily Road to April 18?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, review, discuss, act on a new notice of intent from Junior De Lima for construction of a single-family home, utility, septic system, driveway, and proposed grading at 418 Hot Street, map 20, lot 95. A portion of the project falls within the buffer zone of jurisdictional wetland resources under the local bylaw. Okay, would you state your name and-
Yes. Good evening, I'm Bradford Sterling from SFG Engineering, 28 Main Street in Lakeville.
How you doing, Brad?
Hi, Brad.
Okay, that's good, okay.
I just wanted to clarify, did we see the call?
Thank you.
More of the long call about the abutters.
That's the recent ones.
Remember, did you send?
No. I sent you the receipts.
Okay, well, here's Hot Street. Here's 25, here's 50, so outside. This is definitely beyond 100. Yep, here is the 100.
I've got more sets of plans here. You guys want to see them? So March 11th is the newest version, correct?
Correct.
You guys want another one?
No.
He's got these very well done. Marker.
Now, this is the same as this one here that we have, isn't it?
If you'd like to come look at them too, they're here. If this is only out after the commission discussed, then no. Yes, if you can.
This one here is revised March, March-
Oh, this goes way down the back, huh?
March 11th, let's take a look at this. Let's take a look at the difference. Wait, wait, Pleasant Street. Is this the right, this is not, this is Pleasant Street.
What are you saying, it was over?
Okay.
Check with them, too, they probably get the wrong one. Yeah, working on Pleasant Street, huh?
That's already, you proved that last meeting. Is this to try to slide a plan in and ask us to prove it?
Could you, do you have the copy of the first plans with you?
This one here is February 28th.
Could I see a copy of the first ones, please?
Yeah, February 28th, yeah, I do.
No, the one we have here is February 28th. This is the last, the latest plan?
What's the latest plan?
Oh, November 23rd.
February 28th.
Okay, so this is it, we got the latest plan, okay.
Well, just three wanted to compare, let's compare.
So they're not, certainly they're not going to work in the 25.
Do you have a copy of the first one?
The first?
They're at the 50, out to the 100, and the septic system is beyond 100.
The pump station, along the septic system.
Okay. So what is, it's 32 feet from the corner, so it's 42 feet, they went over 10 feet.
I think correct.
That's good, that's good, I like to compare. So you got 32 feet, and then 106 from the foot line, is it 105?
Everything seems pretty decent, Lisa, as far as setbacks.
So, so it's 10 feet, and what'd you say, you needed to come up, so 59. So he's 59 on this, and he's 66 on this. So not much, but-
But he did move, what, seven feet that way, right?
Yeah. So there's the 100-foot buffer. So that was the number that was in question? Oh, this pink was a 50-foot buffer.
We weren't planning on it.
No.
This right here.
Yep.
This in the blue, this is kind of like all- It's too close, that's why he had-
Was it from 32 to-
42. And then what is the driveway starting to be?
I assume asphalt, but I don't know for sure.
That's outside of the 100, totally outside of the 100?
I believe so, yeah.
Is the garage going to be under the prop, under the house?
22?
No.
32.
No, not where I have it drawn.
Okay, I see it.
It's 10 feet short.
It was blocked out by magic marker.
Yeah.
Okay, so the garage is, so the driveway is-
It's a side entry driveway at level, at first floor level.
So the driveway should be here, unless the, okay, unless it comes in this way.
Oh, yeah, because it's, it's pretty steep up here.
Okay, all right, okay.
So is this on the north side of Hart?
Okay, so that's, that's almost strange to do this and that.
It is, that is kind of funky.
Is this a-
Yeah, it's on the north side.
Yep.
Is, okay, the garage is going to open up this, this side here?
Correct.
Okay, so, and where's the street cut? Is that the street cut? So it's going to kind of wiggle over?
Yeah, because, so it looks like he only did 32 and 42.
Okay, all right, that may-
About 32 to 42.
It didn't make sense until you said that.
We just compared 66 to 59. 32 to 42 away from west.
Okay, let's, I'm going to look at, what number is that? Let me get my glasses on.
Is this wicked steep into the neighborhood?
112, so this is-
111.
111. Oh, here they are, over here. So, okay, so, so the land goes up, levels down, levels off. Okay, so it goes up and levels off here.
So you move the driveway over from where it is?
So there's almost a 10-foot-
Moved everything, the house driveway, everything over 10 feet further away from the IBW.
Okay, I see, I see.
So is that driveway posted? I guess I can go over to that side. There's a swale. Yes?
So are the swales going to be riprap, or are they going to be grassed?
I'm showing them as grassed.
Okay. How much fill do you have to bring in for the house?
I have no idea.
Okay.
What I, what will happen is, as they're backfilling and doing the walls, they'll determine how much fill they need. But, you know, as, as we know, there'll be the erosion control that will be set before anything starts out there, so.
Well, there are erosion controls out there now, but I think there needs to be some encompassing around the whole, yeah.
Is that, is that a pump-up system?
Some footing-
Yes, it is. Okay.
Yeah, because it's three, three feet-
You got a footing drain.
Three feet higher, yeah.
It's the only area on the lot that perked.
To protect the neighbors.
Tried digging in front and-
Yeah, yeah, it's too bad the house wasn't back there, and septic up front.
Going downhill.
Yeah.
I would put some stipulations in to make sure he maintains.
Look at the skin, look at the skin.
Definitely needs to maintain truck access in and out, because that is going to be a messy, messy, messy. Okay.
So, yeah, some of the comments-
Yeah, with, with construction like this, on such steep grade, trucks in and out are going to make a big mess, just to make sure they maintain their access?
Mm-hmm.
Some sort of gravel or something?
Well, I show a construction entrance.
Yep, right there.
Now, even for the house, really not part of our really direction, except that I like to see for your own benefit and the benefit of the homeowner, that somehow you'll get a slight pitch, and then-
Yeah, I don't have the notes.
-swale that'll lead the water back over here.
I do, I do have that on there.
Oh, okay, all right, it can't, I, you really can't see it. Oh, okay, all right.
And then there's one to the upper left of the driveway also.
Okay, all right, that's-
Insulation of cushion.
Because people that have that, their water run underground into their basement.
He's already put a detail, it's a standard, it's a standard. There's no detail on this.
So, have you figured out what size pipe you need for the culvert at the front?
12-inch.
Well, that's a 12-inch.
Okay.
Yep. With five-by-five riprap beds on each end.
Did you run that up by the IBW yet?
No.
Okay, that's something that has to be done before we can approve it. And then the, I think we need to incorporate more erosion controls at like the limit of work as well.
Well, that's, I do show erosion control will be set at the 25-foot buffer.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about at the street level, because you're going to be doing, it's 20 feet above the road.
Correct.
So-
Any erosion will go right into the road or the culvert?
Some of the septic ends are on the way.
On, on the, between the pavement and the property, you mean?
Way beyond.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we need more erosion controls. Certainly you're going to put the septic in first, so I think right below the septic would be a good place to put some, like a row.
Okay.
And then along the front of the property as well, like, I don't want to block the property, but-
So the water flow is going to come this way.
While it's exposed, we want some protection up there.
So this is, this is beyond that house, that dirt house that we dealt with, what's going to be up here somewhere.
Did you add any, did you track seeding at all about adding any seeding to the 25-foot undisturbed zone?
I didn't talk to Stephen about it, we just, you and I discussed it, and I, I knew I was going to be revising this plan. I wanted to get all the comments tonight, and I'll revise the plan once, and- But the plan will be to see where the conservation mix in, especially in the areas that have been disturbed.
So, yeah, it would be a wildlife conservation seed mix, not a wetland mix, but wildlife one, and it has to be approved by me, so, New England Wetland Plant sells a good one.
What kind, I'm sorry?
I'll specify it in the order.
Okay.
But, yeah, let me get the exact wording for you and email it to you so you can add it to the plan.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I know there's people in the audience that have questions.
Okay.
Do you want to open that up now?
Would you like me to present?
You're finished with the, do you guys have any other questions for Brad? Okay, anyone from the audience has, have questions on this property?
Oh, Brad, did you want to do more formal presentation? Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, I could do that. So the proposal here is for a new construction of a single-family house. Originally, we had plotted out with this, it's got a septic system in the back. When we did our fieldwork, it was in September, and we did not notice that there was an isolated vegetated wetland on the front right portion of the property. So Stephen Schmale flagged that, and we located and put it on the plan, and because of that, I had to shift the house over 10 feet, the house to driveway, further to the left, to maintain the 50-foot separation to the edge of wetland. It's, it's, it's a fairly steep lot going uphill from the road, so the septic's going to be behind the house more than, more than 100 feet from the wetland. It will be a pump system because there's about a five-foot change in grade from the house to where the septic's going, five to seven feet. We, we do propose a driveway to come in on the left side of the house. We are putting a culvert under the driveway at the road, because it's currently, the water runs down the road, down the shoulder, so, so that we don't block that, we'll put a culvert under the driveway. We also do, put a couple of swales near the house to pull a runoff away from the house, send it down to the front, to that shoulder again, and let it go down the hill the way it's always been going. Some of it will get into the IBW, and some will continue past it down, and down the street. We are proposing erosion controls along the edge of the 25-foot buffer zone. I will be adding more at Lisa's request, uphill, or at, down below the septic system, and then along the, the front of the road, and we'll also be adding check dams along that shoulder. Are those straw bale, Lisa, or?
We, we like, I think they use the straw wattles out there right now, I'd have to look at my photos, but we really prefer, and that was just because it was an emergency. I said yes, but we like the Filtrix ones, the mulch ones.
Okay. And that's, that's basically my presentation. Thank you. You're welcome.
Questions?
Yeah, my name's Jason Machado, we've been there-
What's your address?
For the, for the record, what's your address? 424 Hart Street, with the budding property. You were in the original- Um, we were, in the original plan, we were actually Lot Two. Um, we turned down the option for Lot One, um, which is four eighteen, um, because we were kind of guided to the fact that they didn't really know how long-term it would even be built. So, we went to Lot Two, um, which is where we built our house where I've been for fifteen years. Um, we've walked in those backwoods where I know there's a source of running water, and whether we wanna call it a, a stream or whatever technical term, you know, on the Conservation Committee, or however we wanna go about it, um, I've been back there, I've watched a deer drinking in it, um, my neighbors have seen it, it's, it's confusing me how this is even really kind of being entertained, because we built in Lot Two, and then three, four, five went. On two, four, six, three Elm Street, which was the final property that was, um, owned by R and R, really. Um, that property was, was built. It hit this continual, whatever water source we're going on here, and the neighbors abutting that property had their fence actually collapsed. Um, and I'm sure the town is aware of it, um, I met with Tom Ferry, um, who I've known for twenty-five years. Um, they created some type of a drainage type of setup to try to help the people because it was just an awful situation. If you drive by my property now and there's been a day of rain or two, and you go to round Hart Street onto Elm, you will see running water from the corner, running towards the drain on my property. Um, we've done everything we could to control it, and I worked with Tom. Uh, they dug this, this potential foundation hole, and that property has been filled with water since September, throughout the winter in seventeen-degree weather. It has never frozen, it is still there right now today. Um, I didn't come today to make a big stint, because we kinda just mind our own business, but I just, I'm really trying to wrap my head around how we can shut off water where we've had nothing but water issues all around that property, and how we're gonna come up with a plan where we're just gonna, all of a sudden, dump gallons and gallons and gallons of water and not have it create a problem for the neighboring properties, because, again, I watched the fence go down, and yeah, the town kinda came up with the solution, but the problem has not been solved. I mean, it, it, it was addressed, and I'm sure those owners appreciate it, but it was never a solved problem, and, you know, everything from the wildlife to the running water, I just, I, I really can't wrap my head around it. And, you know, we, we weren't notified, um, properly, they sent us the wrong date. So I'm abutting property of this land. There is no one in this room that would love us to turn into a beautiful home more than me. I've had to spend more money on fertilizer to get rid of the wildflowers. Um, it's been weeds, there's a junk pile there, there's tires, there's metal. I would love us to turn into something. The only reason I've never addressed it is because I just don't know how it would happen, and I kinda felt like poking in a beehive is only gonna cause you a bunch of stings, right? So we just have lived there for fifteen years, not enjoying the budding property, but the reality is, now that I'm in this moment, and I'm going, this is a giant massive pool of water where they're planning on building a home. Where's that water gonna go? How's it gonna get controlled? In the first experiment on that other property, it didn't work. And I don't want that water getting dumped on my property, on their property, across the street, on Bill's property. I just, I just, I just don't see this being such a simple resolution like it's being presented. I rea, I really, quite frankly, don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This, uh, hearing is gonna be continued. Uh, Lisa, you, they have to notify accurately for the next meeting?
Oh, he, he turned those in today, but it sounds like there were, um, there were still enough people that maybe didn't get them, including.
Yeah, we received, so I found out today that we received notice of it. Uh, I have a very extremely busy job, and we received, uh, the, the notification of it on Monday. Um, I plan out my week on the weekends. I can't get a notice on Monday when I've already planned out my week, and.
Okay, well, uh, this is gonna be continued, it's not going to be, uh.
No, no, I'm just saying that.
And, and so, you know, we're not gonna solve anything tonight.
Yep.
And, uh, and I'm sure that each of us will be down at the site, uh, making observations, you know. We see what the plan is, uh, we see how they look at it and wish to deal with it, and then we'll take a look and see if there are modifications that, uh, need to be made, and go from there.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to make you aware of, the commission aware of, is, um, so we got a, we got an email from the Somerset Water Department. I guess, um, they never received the abutment notice, um, but they, they also emailed me back and told me it was an internal situation between the departments, not notifying the other departments. Um, so, what they told me was they, they own, I believe there's a, did they reach out to you?
No.
Okay.
No, we worked off the list, the certified list that was provided by the assessor's office.
There's, right, there's an easement there, though? A water easement? Yeah, so, um, let's see here, it was Christopher Wickman. Uh, Jackie from the Somerset Water Dis- Department forwarded the plan to Christopher Wickman of their department. So, let me just go back to the first email, because it's kinda long, um.
Does the easement prohibit any of the construction?
I don't know anything about it.
I don't either, we, we saw no, no record of it. And I might have to dig deeper.
Does anybody know where the easement is?
Nope.
It's fifty feet, uh, to the wall.
Okay, so what number, address are you?
Um, three ninety-two hot.
He's to the east of this site.
So you're, you're, you're close to Elm Street?
No.
Opposite, opposite.
The other one.
Jim, we're gonna do a site visit, but I'll show you right now.
Yeah, but all the details will help.
Yeah, so, he, um, is three ninety-two, so, site is right here.
Yeah.
And Elm Street's right here.
Wait, do, do that.
It's the bottom half of Elm.
Elm Street's here.
Yeah.
Mr. Maschado lives here.
Yeah.
The house he was talking about with the problem is here. And what is your name here?
Ronald Downs.
Ronald Downs, Mr. Downs' property is this house set way back up on the hill, and this is the property in question right here.
Uh, okay, so it's the same side as Bill, then?
No, opposite side.
Opposite side.
North side of the road.
North side of the road, bottom of the hill.
North side of the road, yeah, bottom of the hill.
No, but when you show Elm Street here.
Elm's right here.
You're at the bottom half by the water.
Bill's over here.
Okay, so he's closer to one thirty-eight, then?
Took a right out of Bill's driveway towards Elm.
So he could get closer to one thirty-eight?
I know exactly.
All right, oh, I didn't go far enough then on that one. Okay, one thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So you take a right and go up the hill. And so, yeah, this IBW is hydrologically connected in here to the catch basins. There's some countryside drainage, um.
Okay, all right, no, that'll be easier to find then when I go down there.
As far as the easement, that's supposed to be recorded on somebody's deed, correct?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's a Somerset Waters problem.
Right.
About these people.
But if they, if they have, um.
They have an easement, Jim, it's gotta be recorded.
Easement, okay.
They say they gotta, they gotta, uh, Somerset Waters got an easement.
Uh, is that easement for, to, just to?
Oh, I don't know what it's for, I don't know what it's for, but if.
Well, that's Somerset's gonna have to let us know then what it's for.
Yeah, well, I mean, uh, yeah, let us know, and it's also gonna be recorded. So, I mean, they can say whatever they want.
Is it recorded on your property, on your deed?
What's that?
No, uh.
Mr. Downs.
Yes, is it recorded on your property, uh, on the deed, the easement?
I can't remember if it was on the deed or not, but I don't remember. I believe, I believe, just because I was involved with Jim Ayar, um, from the get-go with this, that the, the, the right-of-way that they have, the town of Somerset, went through that property, again, which is why we didn't build on Lot One. Like, again, going back to, not only do I not understand any of this, but the other side of this point is like, the septic side of this, there's running water, right? So, how are we gonna pretend that that's not gonna affect neighboring properties? Because you have running water, you have moving water, and you have now a septic system and a leaching field that is going to now.
See, but that, that's more, that's a water health, Jim, Jim's the water.
I completely understand.
Jim's the director of the water health, okay, so I would bring that.
I used to work with Todd, who, 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 who was the well, so.
Yeah.
But I get it, I'm just saying, like, this whole thing is just very convenient.
Does this surface water drain into one thirty-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
It's.
The septic, the septic's gotta be five foot above groundwater.
Well, look, no, where they are, they're on, they're on a hill there, they're a hundred, uh.
I realize they're on a hill, Jim, but they have to be, when you do your septic, you gotta find a water table. Then I'm, if I'm not mistaken, is it five feet?
It's five in a two-minute perk, it's four feet on the material.
Groundwater, so, I mean, you've got five feet.
Yes.
You know, in, in the.
The other concern, I guess, is the brush line of the foundation, because I have never been to the site and seen the foundation hold dry. It's always, always had water in it.
Always.
Always.
And runs right down the side of that property, along the wall, and is always.
So this.
If I cut the grass, or I get too close, I'm stuck, I gotta get my neighbor to pull me out.
Right, you gotta stay out of there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so all this wetness.
What I told you, you were gonna put solar in the backyard, I said you gotta stay out here, yeah.
Okay, so all this water then is, uh, is, is, um, lateral runoff as, as the water comes down the hill, it's just running, uh, uh, several feet, probably on top of ledge.
Yeah.
But between ledge and soil.
And it's coming from the top, up, miss, you know, hill crest.
Yeah, yeah, near, behind, behind the church there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so.
Yeah, no, I, I've got a good view, up here, I got a good view of, of, but I will get a better view when I go there.
So we're gonna have our own site visit, and, um, you know, you wanna make those changes in the meantime, but I think getting Somerset water input somehow, even if it's just an email response from them, would be great.
Well, if you could forward me that email.
Yeah, I will.
Um, 'cause as I said, I, they aren't listed as an owner, so they weren't notified.
Well, no, Somerset was. Well, so what happened was Somerset was notified, it went to the town, but I guess it didn't get to the Water Dis- Department.
All right, yeah, so when I revise the plans, I'll send them a copy of the revised plan.
Yeah, I would. All right, so.
Okay, um, is there any other public input? Um, okay, uh, is there a motion to continue the hearing until, uh, April eighteenth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Do you have a file number yet? Oh, no, you're not gonna have a file number.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Because it's, yeah, this is only under the local bylaw.
Continued to four eighteen, so four eighteen Hart Street is gonna be continued to four eighteen.
Play that number.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sending that right now.
Will you be doing a group site visit? Should we be there, or?
Um, you know what I think is a good idea? Can you, can you stake out the new location of the house?
Uh, we can, I just don't know how quickly we can do it.
All right.
I'll, I'll discuss that.
We have a month, so.
Yeah.
Are these for us, or do you wanna take these back?
You can keep those if you want, especially for your site visits.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next. Okay, next on the agenda is to review, act, discuss a certificate of compliance request by Horsley and Witten Group Incorporated for Site Soil Evaluation of the Totten River Rail Trails at Sweet Snow. It's, it's file number seventeen dash four sixty-nine. Now, I know you've been out there, Lisa.
Yeah.
We were just out there yesterday, and a couple days prior to that, are they all set for that?
Um, yeah, we, we were out there on Tuesday, let me just dig out that one, okay?
Uh, that is all set for a certificate of compliance?
Yeah, so, I just wanted to read up on that for a little bit, to elaborate, so, the letter we received, uh, in accordance with condition twelve, so this is from DCR, um, regarding their project. It's a nice path, isn't it? It's gonna be a nice path, so they're doing archaeological explorations. So, they're requesting the certificate. Geo, geotechnical borings occurred, um, within the buffer zone and the riverfront area and would generally be considered a minor activity exempt from regulation. However, geotechnical work within bordering land subject to flooding, one hundred-year flood zone, necessitated further review and approval by the Conservation Commission under both jurisdictional, um, under the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, its implementing regulations, and the Dighton Wetlands Bylaw. And then, um, they went on to just talk about how we issued it in November seventeenth, twenty-two, and they requested an amendment in twenty-three. So, then they wanted some archaeological work to be done as well. The amended order was issued March second, twenty-three, and approval of the request, um, was given, and due to the sensitivity of the archaeological investigations, the locations of the test pits are not provided within this ASBIL. Do you guys wanna look at the ASBIL? I can tell you what was done. Um, construction occurred, I'll just give you, I'll give you the ASBIL so you can look at it while I finish reading this. I just think it's important for the public to understand, because this is a public project, and it's a state project.
Right, and archaeological discovery, okay, um.
Soil evaluation, so construction.
I, I've been down there, so.
Compliance with the orders. Soil evaluation areas will only access as specified on the approved plans throughout construction. Geotechnical borings and tests.
Oh, all right, I know where this is, okay.
No stock piling of soils occurred within the resource areas or the buffer zones. Stabilization measures were applied to all disturbed areas within fourteen days of temporary impermanent, um, construction activity. So, again, I'm just.
And all that has been completed now, and, so, okay, so, uh, they're ready for a certificate of compliance? Okay, is there a motion to issue a certificate of compliance to the Horsley and Witten Group Incorporated for the evaluation?
I would like to propose a motion to issue a certificate of compliance to Horsley and Witten Group for a site soil evaluation of the Totten River Rail Trail at Sweet Snow State Park, G and P filed at oh one seven dash oh four six nine.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um. Next on the agenda is bills payable. Uh, we've had, uh, bills that were submitted by, um, Beta for, for work that has been done by them. Uh, Lisa, that was really about it, Beta, right?
Um, I think Maureen's paid some other bills since.
Yeah, there are a couple of other ones in there, there's one from Strawberry Fields, it's all listed on there.
And you've already taken care of these, Paul?
Yep.
Uh, okay, so, ju, just for your information, uh, the bills, uh, have been paid. Uh, if you wanna make a motion to, uh, to accept the payment of these bi, of these bills at hand, uh, make it so moved, and then we'll carry on.
I propose a motion to approve the veteran payroll expenses incurred and otherwise approved since our last meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lisa, you, uh, is there anything you wanna take out, Sharon, I see a couple people here. Uh, maybe if you need to, we can take, uh, out of order, so that, uh.
Okay. I think John wants to hang out with us for a bit, so we'll take Matthew from seven ten Center first. Uh, if you wanna vote to take it out of order.
Propose a motion to take seven ten Center Street out of order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so, um.
Well, you're lucky, we could've kept you here till ten.
It is what it is. Thank you.
Yeah, so I drove by a couple weeks ago and, um, noticed some cutting and clearing done. Um, we sent Matt a certified letter and requested he attend the meeting, and he allow us to walk the property. Dave was the lucky commissioner that went with me. So we had a good site visit, and I don't know if you just wanna kinda just tell the guys what you're, what you were up to, and basically, he had, he had no idea.
Yeah, I actually received a copy of the plot plan that I never saw when I bought the house. No one said anything.
Are there si- are there any signs posted? Okay, I guess there will be then.
Which, that's interesting, because prime engineering, I thought, was supposed to post all that conservation restriction land.
Is that part of something that we signed, made them sign?
Part of the Maris Development subdivision.
I mean, it's all on the other side of Maris Lane.
Yeah, it's all posted over there.
All posted there, you would think.
So if it was in writing, some that they were supposed to, it wasn't done?
Right, they, I gave Matt a copy of his deed and the restrictions, so now he has that information.
Yes, that's wonderful. Um, well, it started with.
I won't send you a bill like your lawyer did.
Started with a large pine tree near the house, which I don't even, I don't even know if it was in that area anyway, but, uh, it would've hit the house, had it fallen. Rotten in the middle, it kinda split four times, you know. So started with that, cut down a couple, uh, black locust trees. And I have every intention of planting new trees, I just, they're pretty bad trees, dead trees, fallen trees, and I had no idea it was, what it was anyway, so.
So it's also a buffer zone, so it's a buffer zone to a veronal pool.
Oh, okay, um, so, uh, is, is replication, are correcting it, uh, well, it's gonna have to happen, but, uh, is he gonna need a special plan, or is it just gonna be some?
Yeah, I, cause I CC Natural Heritage on this, so they did get back to me today, let me just, uh, I'll read this. One second. No, it came in yesterday, Natural Heritage, um, replied that they, replied, she replied all, but it was an internal email she forwarded to me that, um, she drafted a notice, a MISA notice, so Mass Endangered Species Act notice of non-compliance letter to you. Um, it's going through their internal sign-off, so I know townwide, we probably work slow, but the state works even slower. So you'll be getting that, but it basically says, um, it's gonna get issued next week, she assumes, and that the lot's a little bit more complicated than the last one at one Maris Lane.
Yeah, well, that was, what, two or three trees, and, uh, now, did you, did you do any ground disturbances?
Other than pulling stumps, I didn't, there's no fill or anything.
Okay, okay, all right, that's, that's gonna make it a lot easier then.
I didn't bring anything in.
Or digging, or digging up, uh, whatever, uh.
Did you dug the stumps up?
The stump, stumps are out, yeah.
What'd you use?
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so I told him leave that pile there, I mean, we're in turtle season now, going into it. Um, but she said, independent of the Mass Endangered Species Act, um, working in a conservation restriction area is also a violation of the conservation restriction statute. She's gonna, they're gonna internally work on it, but they need to try to get your support for complete restoration. So they're really gonna dictate what happens there. Last time, they didn't, there was a wetland scientist that needed to be hired on Tremont, but she allowed a sketch. So I think she'll probably allow a sketch this time, and I think we're gonna have to plant some native trees and maybe some shrubs.
All right, fine with me, that, that was my plan, I mean.
It's just not gonna be a landscaped area, it's gonna have to be left natural. Hopefully, you're good with that, cause some people wouldn't be.
Yeah.
Now, that, that's, uh, wetland, uh, or, uh, National Heritage land, that is on your deed, right?
Well, you mean the conservation restriction.
Conservation restriction is there, okay, so.
There used to be a hay field.
Yeah, there was no trees there, that's what I was.
No, there wasn't, I physically picked up bales of hay where your house is, all the way from Maris Lane down to the field on the other side.
Yeah, my neighbor told me it was all field.
Well, yeah, so, went quite a ways back.
All right, so I guess you're gonna have to await, uh, National Heritage letter, and then they're gonna tell you what to do.
And then you'll just come back to the next month's meeting on April eighteenth. And, um, in the meantime, hopefully, we'll talk about what kind of trees you wanna plant, and we'll have some sort of a plan.
American chestnut.
Is it? How wet is the land?
No.
It's not wet. Well, uh, and you back up to forest land?
Yes.
Well, maybe you'll be a candidate for some American chestnut then.
And I will say, when the trees did come down, the veronal pool was probably.
Yeah, much.
Size, and the driest I've seen it was a wet depression of leaves. Now, it's quite large, cause it's been wet, but. At the time, it was.
He didn't drive through the pool itself, but he is within the hundred, I believe you're within the hundred foot with some of the cutting.
It would be within, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not up to it, it is probably sixty, seventy feet from the pool.
Yeah, but what, what I want you to understand is that the veronal pool relies on upland habitat.
Sure, oh, yeah.
So we consider, yeah, a hundred feet off.
Yeah. Now I know.
Some people might deny that, though.
Okay, uh.
Yeah, that's, it is what it is, I mean.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh.
Good luck.
Yeah, okay, uh, Lisa is.
Um, John's here, but he wants to go last.
Oh, he likes this, then.
You're all set.
You're all set.
Just when you get the letter.
Well, you're all set for tonight, but.
When you get the letter, just reach out to me. Did I, I gave you the phone, you have the phone numbers and everything you need on the, on the letter, right? Yeah. Thank you.
Have a good night, too.
Okay, uh, Lisa, this, this is all your, uh, agent updates, why don't you just take over here?
Okay.
And how fast you go is when, depends upon when you get home tonight.
No, not really, I'm waiting for my eighteen-year-old, who's coming at eight-thirty, and he's always late. All right, so, cross off seven ten, four eighteen, all right, we're gonna start at the front. Two three seven one County, the lawyer went out of his way to request a continuance, so I suggest we don't discuss any of that. Um, but we are expecting a plan by April third and a site visit on April third, just to remind everybody if you guys wanna attend. I think we had nine AM, it's a Wednesday, so be right before the department head meeting.
Which, which day, I'm sorry?
Wednesday, April third.
I'll try to, they can't commit, but I'll try.
Okay. Um, ten thirty-five Williams, I've been sitting on that one, but, um, I'm leaning towards just recording it, so you guys know. Um, we wouldn't incur a fee if I recorded it.
What is the recording?
The recorded on Tu- Tuat Steve.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got a hundred and six dollars?
Yeah, it's usually around a hundred dollars, so. If I wouldn't get in trouble and you guys tell me I can do it, I'll do it.
I'll deliver the professional technical budget, see, uh, see how many.
There's not. Not really anything left yet. Um, but we do have the Wetlands Protection Fund, which Maureen investigated, that we can use for things like this.
So no couch cushions for them?
Um, all right, so.
Would you like us to vote to approve it?
Well, hmm, sure, if you want to, I mean, or just pay the bill when it comes. I mean, I don't, I just don't know, if I bring it to get recorded, don't you have to pay with a check?
You do, so what would happen is the way that you would do this is you would submit a copy of the recording to the accounting office with a schedule of bills payable.
Okay.
And then, once that's done, you would indicate on the schedule of bills payable, you wanna write the words "check hold."
Okay.
The word "check hold," that would be mailed out, that would be physically retained by my office, and you could come to, to sign for it, or, um, or, you know, we could otherwise figure out what the disposition is gonna be, but that would be the process, is basically submitting documentation to accounting. If they were to pay the bill, then you put "check hold" on the notes of the schedule of bills payable.
Sounds like a plan. Try to do it next week. All right, and then moving on, um, we're gonna skip over zero Horton, cause Mr. Buffington is here for that. Uh, fourteen twenty, I don't have an update from Mr. Arugio. Um, Jim, you see him all the time now, if you wanna just ask him next time you see him, if, how's, you know, the, the work as far as the wetland scientist that's working on, his remediation?
When I was there, I, I asked about, uh, the stage, and, uh, Kenny's daughter said that it, everything was set to go, but they, they weren't producing any energy yet.
No, I'm not talking about Clearway.
Oh.
No, I'm talking about the vi- the potential violation. They wanna dredge the pond. They had started filling around the pond. They are a commercial farm, so there's different exemptions, but he was gonna work with the wetland scientist to come up with a plan for dredging the pond. So next time you see him, if you just ask him.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, I, I, I'll probably be there one, once a week, checking on my plans.
Okay. Great, um, ten thirty-three Oak Street, no one's here for that, um, so I do know that I did speak with Evan Watson, the engineer, on this, and he had been doing a bunch of research. Um, I printed the email for the file. I have that file here. Um, yeah, ten thirty-three Oak isn't in here. Um, in any case, he expects to have something to us soon, and they are going to have to provide some remediation, so. The owner understands that, based on his due diligence. I'm gonna write myself a note to follow up with Evan next week. Uh, one Maris Lane, I spoke with the owner today, because we did get, um, an email back from Natural Heritage, saying that they agree with the approach, and as long as they, um, plant some native trees or shrubs, they'd actually prefer the shrubs in this case, cause I guess, if you think about it, if you've been out to Maris Lane, the understory is very sparse, so, um, the owner told me today that she actually wanted to plant more than just two trees or shrubs, and she was reaching out. There's Framingham has a garden in the woods, um, location, where they help people with, you know, figure out what kind of gardens they want and things like that, but I reiterated that this has to be more like a natural area. Uh, maybe some rhododendrons in there, something flowering, something providing some habitat. So we're gonna work on that together, she's kind of excited to do that, so that's a good thing. Um, two oh nine seven Wheeler has been silent, I haven't spoken with. Um, I do know with that one, that he's reached out to the assesses' office to get an abatement for his property, saying that most of his land is wetland. I don't know what's going on with the shed permit.
I was just gonna ask.
Hmm. I'm gonna check with the building department to see if he's called them at all. And follow up with the owner. Thirteen thirty-four Tremont Street, I received an email tonight.
You, over the last few weeks, you've been receiving multiple emails?
Yeah, last week and then tonight. Um, tonight, he sent an email, um, I agree that, and I did speak with the neighbor, the the silt, um, seems to be under control, it's looking, the street's looking good there. Um, I don't think we're adding any more runoff to the veronal pool, and then you did send out a couple videos, you think that those.
So we went late at night, once after a storm, um, water was not coming off a lot of property, it was actually coming off the area just east of his driveway, and that, even though the water was coming off of there, it was crystal clear, you know, flowing over the top of leaves and sand and, there was no sediment, any moving water. Uh, one of the other videos was one of the most recent ones, we were out there on one of the warm nights, and if you listened, you could hear the frogs, so. Happy with that, I can stop my underground frog breeding company, and I'll be all set, I think.
Yeah, so, I mean, my, I haven't been out there, and I, and I did call the owner today, actually, before you sent those, and I asked him, he said he hadn't heard any yet, but he's gonna listen, so I'm sure if they are.
It's not the night.
Yeah.
It's not cold, but last week, when it was warmer, they were out.
There was a warm night, and I was driving the truck, and I had the window down, and I said, oh, I wonder if the frogs were over there on Tremont.
Did you go by, did you hear?
No, I listened to them going up Main Street, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were definitely out, they were in the tines, they went out and, you know, break force, but, you know, they're definitely standing in the lawn, just listening over in the, you know, in that direction, you could definitely hear them, so that was good. An update on how we're making out over there, the landscape is going in, uh, the middle of next week, they're gonna take three days to do that. They're gonna loom and hydroseed everything on the, uh, berm out in front of the septic system, goes down and approaches the road. He's also gonna add some additional, uh, some sort of fabric he was talking about, I'm not familiar with it, but like a, uh, some kind of rolled-out mesh that he's gonna put on, he said it'll help control that as well.
Stabilize, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm hoping to be out of there, I originally wanted to close on the twenty-fifth, but I'm still probably a week behind from completing the inside, and then I have to run through the, you know, politics and departments to get all the sign-offs. So I'm done, it's, lights are on, the only thing left inside to do is carpet, um, so as soon as the outside is done, I'm ready to close with those people.
Now, he's, uh, the, the landscape is gonna come in next week, you said?
Yes.
Okay, that's probably better than this week, cause we got, up to three inches of rain coming on Saturday.
Right, I don't wanna have all that loom washing off.
No, no, you don't.
And then we'll just back a truck up and fill that pond in, or whatever.
Evict the frogs yourself.
Yeah, okay. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay.
While I'm here, you might, I ask, what is the, um, procedure that I'm gonna need to go forward? I need sign-offs from all apartments, so I'm gonna have to get sign-offs from conservation as well.
Yes.
How is that going to affect my closing and the final occupancy permit and all my final building permits?
It will affect it, yeah, um.
So what do I need to do to satisfy that, cause I didn't wanna have any holdups?
So. Um, I want to follow up, like I said at the last meeting, I think we should follow up at least another breeding season to make sure, like, in the fall, to make sure that this pool, I'm not saying you can't occupy the house until the fall. Um, so far, you've been very cooperative, so I don't think it will affect anything.
It's more so the fact is when it goes down from department to department, I don't know what hits conservation, is there a difference between what?
Oh, I know, it hits right away, because I'm one of the only departments that's on the permit link. Um, so as soon as you apply for the building, the.
If you wanna go out there and walk it, see the landscape next week, if you're gonna wanna tour the place and check it out, that. If you want to go out there and walk it, see the landscape next week, if you're going to want to tour the place and check it out, I, I just want to know what I need to do to be proactive, maybe so that it's a smooth transition.
The site stabilization, stabilization is a big deal, so usually we won't sign off on a permit, if we have a permit before us, until it's stabilized. So I think once it's stabilized, that's when we'll be signing off for you.
So, what is stabilization definition?
Eighty percent cover.
Cover meaning if it's hydroseeded?
Grass. Yep, grass. No, but the grass has-
It has to sprout?
Yes, it has to be growing.
So, the closing would be held up, or just the-
That's up to you guys. Normally, they just do something like with an escrow or something.
No, 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 I don't mean that part, I mean, for me to get my final sign off from town, the conservation issue, I'm assuming it can stay open and be open, but you'll sign off on my building permit and my, and my permits, so I can close with the bank. Bank won't close if I don't have a, a final occupancy, but I can't get a final occupancy if all the departments don't. Agree that everything is in?
Yeah, um, I think-
Keep your case open, if you will.
You know, if they, if he covers it with fabric, and what, is hydroseeded first, or you fi, or do you hydroseed through the fabric?
So, I don't know the process of how he's going to do it, what I do know is we're going to take all the silt fence down, we're going to take the stump rindings that you-
I'd normally pull, pull the chips back to the edge of the road.
Yeah, so we're going to take it, pull it back, keep it in line, and then reset the fence further back on the property, but put all the stump rindings out on the street area where they are.
Make the higher berm with them, narrow it up and go higher.
Yeah.
Or just pack it in slightly, but don't get rid of that.
We're not going to get rid of it at all.
What I'm saying is if you, if you, even when they fabric that, hydroseed it, you can still get runoff.
Oh, we're still going to put the fence back in place after we do?
Narrow it up to about eighteen inches, just make a berm out of it and pack it slightly, you'll be doing yourself a favor.
I guess there's no instruction, I know idea of what the town is going to want. I know the highway department's going to have to go by, and they're going to have to do their thing and look to see if the area out in front of the house and the street is copasetic to the way that it was, I'm guessing for eight nights, there really wasn't much out there.
Yeah, I'm sure he's going to want to make sure that you put the driveway where you said you would.
Yeah, so that part's done, and I want to keep all of the stump rindings out in the front. I want to take the silt fence that's on the road and I want to pull that back to be in line with the tree line of everybody else on the road. Hydroseed from there back and make sure that the new silt fence reset.
And then I would also double check with Tom to see what he wants to, you to do in that right away, because that right away, were you kind of cleared?
Well, it was always low, cut grass along the edge of the road.
Yeah, so I think he's going to-
With the silt runoff on top, I'm sure that there's something down there, but that's what I'm saying.
He's going to want that restored. I would talk to Tom about it, right away, you know, he works on Fridays, too.
But after the original question, will I be able to obtain an occupancy permit and still keep a environmental case in it?
Yeah, um, so if you've hydroseeded it, and it's getting watered and it's starting to sprout up, and your closing is what-
Well, I'm saying, starting to sprout is not going to happen immediately, I want to close next week is what I'm hoping for.
Oh, next week?
Yes. And I want to do whatever it takes to satisfy that, so that the committee will be-
Big heat laps.
Well, I think probably, what did you say?
Big heat laps.
Oh, yeah. I think I, I would be okay, if the commissioner would be okay, with just an email from you telling us that you are hydroseeding it next week, you're going to water it, you understand we want eighty percent or more coverage, and, um,
That they are, they are following through on the plan to correct.
Yeah.
And, and then, a final approval will come from, when, when it's come up, but as of now, we are satisfied.
Yeah.
And, you know, and for you to do that, let's say the end of next week, if it's hydroseeded, if it has the netting over it, because that's, that's going to be a big deal, and next week, there, uh, I think there's only a few days of showers, and, you know, you might even get growth by next weekend, depending upon what kind of seed is in there.
Yeah, we're going to put a mixture of a bunch of things inside there, get some fast growth, you know.
Well, yeah, and if, and if you put plenty, and I mean, uh, and I, when I say plenty, because you're going to need po, a, a good amount of annual rye, but it can't be all annual rye, because next September, next September, they'll be, uh, they'll be chasing you down.
Do you have any loom in there, enough loom, you think? Is there enough topsoil in there?
I'm bringing in truckloads of loom.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to loom the entire place and seed it all next week.
Great. Do you know what day?
Next week is what I was told, so I don't know, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But if you, you're going to leave, you're going to leave the erosion control in, so.
How do we know the owner's not going to rip it down?
I don't, the owner's not going to rip it down, but I can say that I'm closing and include that into a clause when I'm closing and tell them that it has to maintain.
Yeah.
And it has to be full growth before they can remove it, and I can even have it go as far as, um, you know, need to check with the conservation commissioner before it's open to remove.
So that would make me a lot more comfortable with the transition, given you, you're okay, you get to your next step as long as the conditions that you're agreeing to with us get passed on.
Yeah, I certainly do that and include that inside of the, uh, the closing clauses.
Now we got to figure out how to pass that on to Lisa to see that it's followed through.
Well, yeah, the other, you know, let me see, if I have a card in here, I don't think I do.
That's completely fair, you've done your due diligence with what you could do.
If you give them one of those flyers, my, my email in, and have them reach out to me, just confirming that they've, that, that'll be great.
Okay, she's expecting a trial in the next couple of days, you may not hear from her for a week or so, maybe even up to that closing, but I'm certainly-
Yeah, and I know how tired you get when you're about to have kids and you're not paying attention to anything else, so.
I take a daily route to go by there, too, uh, coming-
Yeah, I go by it every, every, almost every day I'm here, so.
And if you guys would like to go by, I'm more than happy to have every single one of you go over there, and we can walk, and you can tell me if there's something that you don't like.
Well, I, I've been there, I've been there enough.
How can you not call?
I, I've met your, your plasterers, I met your roofers, I met your, um, who was the last one that was there, I don't know, but I've met several of the, of the workers, and I'm just looking things over. And I kept them on us, so they did a good job for you. They don't know who I am.
Yeah, so that's a plan, you know, if you just want to send us an email, like, I, you know, tell me, tell me, we're looming, seeding, you know, whatever day it is, and then I'll follow up, and then when you go for your building permit, I'm going to get notified. I, I don't, not your building permit, your certificate of occupancy.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm expecting that the electricians and plumbers will call in their inspections tomorrow or Monday, depending upon the office hours, and then I'll call for a final, and then shortly after that, I'm looking to close it as fast as I can.
Yeah. Makes sense.
You'll be hearing from me in the next week.
Okay, and do you have my work cellphone number? You think you have that one?
I'm not sure, is that the one on the front of this?
No.
You've called from different numbers in the past, and I don't know which is which, to be honest with you.
Yeah, let me, um-
And I have multiple forms, too, so she's not sure which one.
Let me give it to you, so you have it. The mobile number is, um, five-
Remember, you're on record saying this, everybody in the donkey, eh?
Five zero eight eight two one eight two three eight.
You can receive text messages for that as well?
Yep, you just texted me. Got it, so, oh, you called me. So, yeah, so just text or call me on that number, I check it every day I work, and that'll be the most direct way for you to get in touch with me.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Great.
All right, um, twenty-four seventy Pleasant Street.
One more thing, I'm sorry, can I, um, be off the hook for returning to these meetings at this point? If everything goes well, and if you-
I would like you to check in with us, check in with us before the next meeting, because I'm going to be checking-
Will we do one more meeting? I'll come back and do one more if you want, the next one you guys are going to have?
Yeah, April eighteenth.
April eighteenth?
Well, the grass should be a foot high by then.
It'd be a foot high, but I'm going to be in, uh, I'm going to be in North Carolina, that's not going to actually work, I'm sorry, the one after that, do you have any, what's the next one after that?
May thirtieth.
Correct.
You want to move on to that?
Sure. Maureen, can you remember to send that out to him?
Yep.
Awesome. Great.
Okay, shall we move on? Twenty-four seventy Pleasant Street?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I actually don't have an update, and I did not follow up with them, but I need to.
Okay, all right, so now we come back to, uh, gentlemen, I think that's, uh, another old Horton Street, no?
Zero Horton Street.
Yeah, because we took seven ten out, we took fourteen out.
I think, no, we got to go back, I think, uh, I think it's over.
We took seven, ten, seven, fourteen out.
No, no, there we go.
We took these two out of order.
Oh, on the back, uh, yeah, zero Horton Street.
Yep, so what's going on?
My knee is not happy with this weather. I talked to Carlos this week.
Oh, great, yes.
Okay, so everyone knows you're at, uh, Horton Street, up by the church.
Right.
And you are next to the fellow that ripped apart the well.
Ripped the land apart, yes.
Okay, so you're going to tell us what your plan is.
Well, I'm going to tell you what my plan is, when I get the letter from him saying that it's all set to go. I just don't, my biggest fear is that once I get the property and we do the removal of the, the driveway and stuff, is that they're going to come, you guys are going to come back and say, "We got to do this, you got to do that, you got to do this." I don't have that kind of money to play with. I have an estimate right now for what it's going to cost to do it. And also, this is going, this is, if you look at the plot plan, there's a stone wall that runs down the side of the five acre piece by next door neighbors. Anything that's beyond that stone wall, which is probably three acres, is going to remain like it is, it's not going to be touched. It's just the property that's on this side of the stone wall, so, um, that's what I'm going to, I'm going to have to work on. And I did bring some pictures, if you guys wanted to see them. It's, it's quite a mess, I'm, I'm being upfront. Right now, there's like five or six vernal pools there. One's got frogs, one's got frog eggs, one's got tadpoles, one's got turtles.
Already?
Already, I don't know what to do. I mean, I, I don't want to go in there and disturb this, because personally, I don't want to disturb it, but I also would like to have it as close to back to normal as possible.
Now, Lisa.
This is-
Do you have the pictures, sir?
This is in chronol, chronological order.
Is it?
Yes. So as you, this is what it looked like before you got ahold of us.
Okay.
You guys will have to get the weather, I only made one copy.
Not yet, that's what he's talking about.
I've been out there six or seven times, and I, I understand, sir.
It's just, it's heartbreaking.
That's why he's purchasing it. So we have a draft plan, you've seen it, right?
I've seen the draft plan.
Okay, the draft plan talks about erosion control, removal, planting.
Planting, I don't, if it's going to be pasture, just to be, I don't think I would like to put anything in there, because whatever goes in there, my sheep will eat it, number one. And number two, if the sheep don't eat it, the deer are going to have a feast on it.
Right.
You know, so, but like I said, I, everything outside of that, on the other side of that wall is going to be left.
So, I, I think the best, it's a real mess, and if you guys want to visit, maybe you should go check it out.
It is, it's just, it's heartbreaking.
Yeah, I, I've been there, I've never saw them before, but I saw them after.
When we were out there, I told John that I thought if he, and I told Jeff this, if he pays to pace the bills that need to pay for the wetland scientists and the engineer for the plan, follows the plan as far as removal of sediment, removal of all the fill, and then let it reestablish and we seed it, and then we see what happens in the fall.
I don't want to upset too much there right now, because, like I said, there is a lot of wildlife, little stuff growing in there.
A, a lot of those stumps and everything else, uh, even though it looks ugly, I think that as they decay, they're, they're going to eventually support more vegetation, it might take four or five years.
My fear is, my fear is that we already have had two coyotes back there. I don't need coyotes moving in to a field where they can hide in there and then attack livestock. I don't want, I, you know, I don't want that to happen. And that's my biggest fear, I mean, we've been there since ninety-two, and have had one coyote attack, because the coyotes that were living there were sheep friendly, I'll just say it like that, but now I don't know, because there hasn't been any there that we've seen lately, and now all of a sudden, there's some stream again. That's all, that's all, I need just, I just want to be clear, you know, I don't want to-
So once the engineer approves everything, we can have, we can see what you're going to do, and?
It's already, but every, the engineer's already-
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's just a matter of business, paying the-
I got to, I got to, yeah, I have to pay the bills.
Well, you got to get the land first.
Yeah, I'm not paying the bills until I get the land.
Yeah, well, it sounds like you are the first responder of seeing somebody else's accident in this situation.
Well, I, and a lot of it's my fault, because I thought he had his permits. Had I known he didn't have them, I probably wouldn't have said anything anyways, but, because that's not, that's not how I work. But, he doesn't have any permits, and I, when I talked to him on Tuesday, he said, "You had just gotten out of the hospital," so, and I told him at that point, I told him I would cover the cost of the, of Steve and of Zenith, those two people. I forgot to tell him that I cover the taxes that haven't been paid, but that's all right, I can live with that. But I mean, I just don't want it to turn into a fifty thousand dollar project.
Yeah.
You know, I just, I, you know, the money that, the money that has already been discussed is well within my means of doing as a retired individual.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Well, keep, uh, Lisa informed, especially when the land is transferred, that's going to be, I think, your biggest move, and then you can work on the restoration, you know, the part that you'll be doing. Okay, thank you for coming.
Oh, you're welcome, I, you know, I hate to, I hate to be coming to the meetings and holding you guys up, but-
No, you're not, oh, no, 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 you're not holding something, this is-
If I don't have a clear path, this is, you know. Because it's, um-
We enjoy hearing from people like you, because, uh, you're in the restoration mode.
What would be, I got a question for you, though. In this plot, he removed some huge rocks, where he removed those hu, huge rocks, now there's a vernal pool, okay? All right, between, now that's here, you take like a footstep down, there's more rocks that he removed, and it dropped down to there. And then if you go down a little bit more, it goes into the, into the pond that was down there at one time, just, just basically really wet until August. Would it be possible to change the type of, the topographical of that, so that this pond that's up here, or this vernal pool that's up here?
Well, it's not a vernal pool yet.
Well, it's got, got tadpoles in it, it's something. It's something, but can I change, can, could I drop that so it doesn't get any deeper, so it would run to the next pool and then run out to the next one? Would that be permissible?
Uh, talk to your agent about that and see. No, I'm talking about whoever you're hiring on that, uh, I, I'm not there to observe it right now.
It's kind of out of the way, right? It's kind of, yeah, it's not really a-
He made it, right? He made, the other guy, he made it.
This is, there was no water in some of these places.
Yeah.
That last picture you looked at?
That's why I said, uh, usually vernal pools take years to, to become established, but why is it so quick, I don't know.
Two years.
Yeah.
Two years.
Two years, all right.
I couldn't believe it when I saw tadpoles in there.
So, yeah, so the other thing is you're, um, you're not only cleaning it up, but you said you wanna reestablish that stream.
We have a stream that goes, that's out back that Roy Horton did years ago and it comes from the next door neighbor's land. It comes through our, a rock base and then there's a rock base that goes all the way along that the stream comes over. I wanna put that pack together and have it go into that wetland rather than having it just.
Yeah.
You know, so there's, there's a bunch of things I wanna do, but there's, you know, I, I.
Well, talk to, you, you said you have a wetland scientist.
He's already done. He's already done it.
Oh, he's done already?
Yeah, he's already done it.
So it's up to the engineer to put the plans together?
It's done. Didn't that what Steve did?
Yeah, I have it, but they're not ready to present it 'cause they didn't get paid for it yet.
No, they haven't got paid. And like, I'm not paying for it until I get.
No, not, not until you get, uh.
I mean, I, but I felt I should come and keep you guys up to date.
Yes, thank you.
Maybe I'll see you next month. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Is there anything else to be discussed?
I just have one quick.
Oh, yeah.
Um, there's the, for the Enrad for RJR Properties for Zero Horton, we, they are negative ninety-seven dollars and fifty-five cents in their fifty-three G account. Um, I reached out to Nova, they don't wanna pay it and the applicant doesn't wanna pay it, so.
They withdrawn their application?
They've withdrawn their application. So we don't even really have anything to hold over their heads to get them to pay it. So if I can't get anybody to pay it, do I have permission from you guys to pay it out of the wetland protection fund?
Denied.
Or professional technical? I mean, we might have to eat the cost. Serena wants.
Marty went over. She didn't give us the bill for the overage, so I asked, can you just give us the bill for the overage? I know we probably won't get paid, but then we can justify paying you that hundred bucks. You know what I mean?
Right.
Did she, did she exceed the quote? Is that what happened?
Yeah, she had exceeded it anyway, but we had asked them for more money and that's one of the reasons why they didn't wanna proceed, so.
So why did, uh, why did the amount go over what they'd originally given us?
Because, well, she came to the meeting and then presented that we needed, she needed to go over.
But shouldn't that have come out of the first, uh, uh, amount of money that they gave for the fifty?
Yeah, I think she probably, what happened was she, when she, when she sent me the invoice, she said, I think this is the right amount, but she wasn't sure. And I get sent it up to Serena and that's when Serena said, no, it's over.
I don't know, should, should we send a letter to, to, is it Marty, right?
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I hate to say it, but maybe we should say that, you know, this is, this goes beyond the amount that you had, uh, quoted us.
I sent her an email, but she didn't, her response was more that they still owe her money.
She called me too and I told her to send us an invoice for the full amount that she actually worked, which was a lot more than what she got paid for and what was in the budget.
But what did she initially say she needed in the fifty-three G? She got all of that money. So she went over what she initially budgeted?
She did, and we requested the funds, 'cause it was a lot of back and forth, remember? We requested the funds.
Yeah.
And they didn't wanna pay the funds, so.
So we are shorted, or she's shorted, we're shorted seventy dollars?
Ninety-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
It's probably not good practice, uh.
Yeah, I, I would not at all be comfortable with, um, with us paying it.
Jim, would you call Marty? 'Cause I, frankly, I mean, I.
Yeah, she, I must have her on my, uh, uh, if not, I'll, if not, I will get it from you and I'll talk to her about it. Okay.
Because really, this amount exceeds what we were authorized to spend.
Yeah.
At the time that we established it. So.
I mean, what, what she said she was gonna charge, it, it shouldn't have gone beyond that and for her to do additional work, it would have been with the additional money that was requested.
Right.
So, uh, i- it's like she's asking for more than what she asked for in the original fifty-three G.
Right, and that's, that's exactly, I, I think.
Okay, I, all right, I, I, I will tell her that and then I'll, I'll deal with it.
Right, whereas, now if we're negative ninety-seven dollars, so she's been paid already.
Yeah.
Okay, so she already got paid, so it's a matter of.
No, we still owe her, or she's still owed another ninety-seven by her calculations.
No, she was paid, it's just that account is not overdrawn because it's a fifty-three G, so.
Oh, oh, so it's our account that's overdrawn?
Yeah.
Yeah, the bank account's not literally overdrawn, but.
No, no, but.
It was paid out of general fund revenues and then needing to be offset by a transfer from the fifty-three G.
Marty, Marty is not, wait a minute, I, I, I'm confused here then. Marty has been paid.
Yeah, so it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the applicant are the ones who should be paying this. However, they have withdrew the application, so we really have nothing to, you know.
Right, and they're not, and they're not going to do it.
No.
All right, so we owe the account ninety-seven fifty from other, so what we have to do is transfer from one account to another?
Right, but we really, if, if, if we don't, then it will hit free cash at the end of the year, basically, is, is what ought to happen. So what we should do is contact the applicant to, to inform them that there was an overage and request them to make it whole. However, if that was not the amount that they agreed to and that was not the amount that.
But they, right, okay, they gave the amount that, that, of the original request from the fifty-three G. This is the way I'm reading it.
Right.
But then Marty billed us more than what, is that correct? Marty billed us more than what was.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
Put into the fifty-three G. So Marty, so, so what we're asking for is Marty to give us back ninety-seven fifty?
Yes, which I have asked her and she doesn't feel like she should have to, is the takeaway I got from that.
Yeah, and I honestly don't even believe, I don't, I, I mean, I don't even disagree with her at all, 'cause we, we needed her help.
Yeah.
So.
So we hired, we essentially hired her then without, um, to come in, without realizing it?
No, y- yes and no. You, we knew we needed her for the additional hours, 'cause remember Brandon was going back and forth with her?
And, and that was gonna be in the next amount that they refused to pay. So, so, so she came in on our account thinking that the money was going to come in, or we were thinking that?
Of course. Sorry, my son left my car over there and I wanted to make sure I'm gonna have my key.
So was it, the procedural on our end that?
I don't know, this, it's, it sounds like, um.
Yeah.
We retained her in hopes of them sending the extra money in. And if that is our case, we inadvertently, uh, requested her services before her services were paid for by the next fifty-three G, um, account was reestablished.
I'd, I'd have to go back and re-watch or reread the minutes from when we retained her because.
I remember her coming in, uh, but I.
Really what she should have done is stop working when she hit the amount that she, of the estimate. That was, that was the amount of work she had approval to do. So she did approve, she did an amount of work that she was not approved to do and then we paid it and now the applicant.
No, I, 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 I hear what everybody's saying and, and, uh, everybody's right.
Right.
Everybody's right. Um, and, um.
Right, if that's what occurred, if we asked her to do that in anticipation that they would do it.
I, I thi, I think that's.
If that's what happened.
And then they said no, then we are in for it.
Really, we should have had her refrain from any additional work until the applicant.
We didn't.
Right.
But we didn't. Um. I'm almost at the point where I say, okay, let's take from account A and put it into the other account to cover the ninety-seven fifty. Uh, and.
What account would it come from though? We definitely don't wanna use our, well, the filing fees, 'cause it's a revolving account that we, we don't wanna be, you know, we don't wanna be using that to be paying basically a fifty-three G plus up.
What about if, Paul, if we use the professional technical fund, because we still have a certain amount of money left over from, like, I got hired late in the year, there's still that extra money, so even if we go negative in professional technical, couldn't they pull it from like my salary that I'm not gonna use for this fiscal year?
There's definitely extra money in there.
There's gonna be some extra.
We really need to establish concretely, which I'm nowhere near confident enough to say, that we retained her services.
Okay.
Well, you're not confident to say we retained?
That we as a commission independently hired her in, above, beyond, the, the commission shouldn't be paying for it, is really what I'm saying.
Oh.
So we're gonna argue.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was the whole point. We said we.
They were negotiating for us.
Yeah.
In between and, I mean, nobody was looking at the clock like, oops, you gotta stop at ten minutes past eight. You know what I mean? This was probably dragged out, it's a little needy, or another.
Yeah, there was some games being played by the, in that, on that one.
If we can take it from one account that we're gonna have a surplus in, 'cause we're, we're coming to the end of the year, there's gotta be some account that we're gonna have a surplus in, that we can transfer the ninety-seven fifty over to. I don't, I don't know what, uh, the account would be. That would, I don't know if that's your department or, or if, um.
What we could do is I can, um, have a conversation on Monday with the town accountant.
Yeah.
See what she would advise in this scenario.
Okay.
Especially now considering with the applicant, the applicants withdrawn their applications, we really kinda lost any leverage that we had.
Yeah, oh yeah, we have lost it.
And, um, the only other option would be that really if this was a situation where we were definitively owed the money by someone, this is, can't be like we need to a tax bill or anything like that, but it could be referred to my office to pursue collection efforts.
Okay, well, the only thing is, we still have them for that, um, uh, for the NOI. They, they're still here for the NOI. They, they, they re, they withdrew the Enrad, but they're still here for the NOI.
Oh, all right, so then we.
So we, we, there, there is a possibility, but it, it appears according to Lisa that they're gonna drop out of that one too.
Lisa, do you think they're gonna drop out of the NOI as well?
Yeah. I did tell, I told the engineer who still has the NOI going that we asked Marty for an invoice for her overage and that it was gonna be sent to them. Um, and he said unfortunately, he hasn't gotten paid. So that's just what's kinda happening now.
Brandon hasn't been paid.
No, it's Mark, the engineer.
Oh.
Brandon, Brandon got paid and it wasn't time change.
Okay, let's go to what you said about Monday, uh.
Yes, I can talk to the town accountant, see what she would recommend.
If, what, whatever, if we're, if we're gonna have overage, uh, at the, and, 'cause we only get, what, two months to go before the fiscal year comes to a close, uh, they should have a pretty good sight. And the ninety-seven fifty is, you know, it's, it's still something, but it's not gonna be, uh, it's not like it's five thousand or ten thousand, anything like that. And I think that would clear our accounts.
I think you're worried about the procedural of making sure it doesn't happen. Why did it happen?
I think I can see why it happened, uh.
Right, and really, are we gonna be performing this transfer with money that we're authorized to spend? Okay, so I guess we can do some research.
Okay.
Right, because really, if we do that, then really we as a commission paid for a private applicant's.
True.
Private service for their own private endeavor. And we're not in the business of doing that. So we'll have to do some research.
Or, or did we, are we paying for her to give us advice as to what they need? I don't know. Think of it that way too. So it, it's one of those.
Slippery slopes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, get to the bottom of it on Monday? Yep, sounds good.
Okay, is there, uh, okay, is there a motion to, uh, uh, close?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.